The Topeka City Council Meeting will please come to order if you would rise and give your attention to Councilman Cohen for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Giving the invocation tonight is Reverend John A. Hanson. John is an ordained minister with the Assemblies of God Church in Springfield, Missouri. They have pastored in Missouri, Indiana, and Kansas. John is active-duty retired U.S. Army Chaplain. He is currently the Chaplain for the Shawnee County Sheriff's Office, and he has served there for over 18 years. And he's a good friend. Thank you.
Let us bow and pray. Dear Heavenly Father, Creator of all, thank you for this day you have given us to serve you and our community. Thank you for these who serve in leadership for our city. Bless them. Grant them wisdom to do the tasks for which you have called them to do. And for those who are going through difficulties, we lift them up to you to undergird them and help them. To all this, we give you great praise and thanksgiving. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no proclamations this evening. We do have a presentation. Mr. City Manager, if you would introduce that, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to call Mr. Fyander, Planning Director. He's going to provide an overview on the bikeways implementation.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Councilmembers. Mr. Mayor, it is happy December. It is December 1st, and by all means, most people are putting their bikes away, certainly after the last week or so. But we do have some significant milestones that we are achieving this fall and winter with implementation of our bikeways plan. And hopefully, these things will welcome the bikes back out when the weather is just right again. There's a big chunk, about 32 miles, being implemented this fall and winter of our 122-mile bikeways network, so it's pretty significant. You've been seeing the symbols and signs probably around on the streets, and maybe you've been getting questions, like I have been, about what that means, what does this all mean? So we thought this would be a good time to educate, walk you through some of this, and then also kind of launch, a soft launch, if you will, into the winter, a marketing and education campaign about our bikeways to the public in general. And Ally and her team have been working very hard on that to get that out. So, it's a work in progress. That's the first thing you should know. The plan was initially approved in 2012 by the governing body, in the MTPO. And the thing you should know about this is, tonight, when I talk about bikeways, it's really on the street. It's not the recreation trails off the street. It's really on the street, in the right-of-way bike paths. And so it's more of a destination plan, destination-based plan, that you can get to destinations within the city, not necessarily recreation plan, although the trails are part of the network. So it makes us more sustainable for growth, and we want to become a more bike-friendly community as well. What is it by the numbers? There's 25 new bike routes being implemented, seven existing trails that will be interconnected with those bike routes, 122 overall miles of on-street network, a couple thousand signs, a couple thousand street symbols on the street, and a price tag of four and a half to five million when the plan was done. And that's to fund a basic network. And I'll explain what that means, but basically, there's no real frills here. It's a lot of, no trail connection or no additional trail segments, protected lanes, and some other amenities that we could and should probably eventually have. Okay, so that's just a map showing you the entire network as envisioned in the plan. That's the 122 miles. As you can see, it not only includes the city, but also goes out beyond the city's limits as well. What we have, or where we are right now with construction, by this time next year, we'll have 43 percent of the network in place on the street, which includes the 32 miles that are being done now, and another 13 miles to come next year. And that's what, and you have, and I attached a map in the back of your handout as well that shows this in a little more detail. But this map, it represents what will be on the ground under construction or funded by this time next year. So that may help figure out a little bit. All right. So in talking about bikeways, there are different types of bikeways. There's four different types of infrastructure that we will use, so when you're on the street or in the right-of-way, you'll be using one of these. First one is the most prevalent is sharrows. You've already seen these maybe on streets throughout town in some of our pilot projects. It simply means to share the road with motorists. And it really alerts, it's really meant more for the motorist than the cars to be alerted that you will see bikes, to watch out for bikes on this route. The next term we use is bike boulevards. In this case, bike boulevards are really geared towards more, the roads geared towards bikes. And so we discourage speeds for cars with traffic calming. One of the pictures there shows sort of a circle in the middle of the road to discourage speeding, but allowing the bikes to go through in a safe and efficient manner. We don't have any of the enhancements for bike boulevards funded necessarily. That's something that we could do later on, but right now, they're going to be bike lanes or sharrows on bike boulevards. And that's, so the next prevalent bikeway is a bike lane. This picture shows one that was just laid down southeast Sixth, coming out of downtown into the East Topeka neighborhood. As you may figure it out, a bike lane is a dedicated lane. Right side is parking lane, left side is your travel lane for the motorists. So it's a nice four-foot or more protected lane for the bike. The last type of facility is a side path. The side path, now we're off the street. We're off up where the sidewalks are, and these become now wide sidewalks. These are 10-foot-wide multi-use paths for bikes and pedestrians. The two examples I have here, one that's going in right now along Gage Park to the left, that is, will connect Sixth and 10th multi-use paths when those streets are done. And so that'll be helping also connect the perimeter of Gage Park. And then there's one out on 17th, the other picture. When we do new streets and there's a bike, it's part of the bikeways, we will implement and integrate either a side path or bike lane or a share or whatever. In this case, the arterial streets, you would usually see a side path, because that's, you want to get, on the busier streets, you want to get the bikes off the street if you can. And then there's also, the last thing on infrastructure here is signage and connectors. Signage, you have seen the blue signs for our bike routes that go up. Those, again, are really meant for the motoring public and the motors to see those. We also have some guidance and wayfinding signs for bikes along the routes. There's a picture there up in Noto of a sign with directions to the trail in the area, as well as downtown. And then we also have something called connectors. Connectors, actually, I presented one to you a couple weeks ago. The TA grant was a connector through Betty Phillips Park to get from a bikeways to a trail, to the Landon Trail. So we do those normally through parks to do connectors. Okay, so there's a lot of infrastructure, and the one thing that I would disclaim her, disclaimer comes out now, is you don't have to ride a bike, you don't have to ride on a bikeway. You can ride on any street, and frankly, any street in the city is, you can have your bike. So that is, the bikeways are meant to balance safety and connectivity. So that's the preferred route for, if you are a bicyclist and you are, want to make connections through the city, those are going to be the safest routes, those are going to be where they connect you the quickest. All right, funding. As I said, the basic network, which is what the plan envisioned, is funded. The first couple phases, this year and next year, that are being constructed through KDOT grants and city and private matching funds. The next phases, three through five, would be funded through the county half- cent sales tax. And then, like I said, if we do a new CIP road project, we would also integrate funding for the bikeways to do a complete street there. Been talking about infrastructure. I'll end up here with more soft stuff, so support system. We talked about being a bike-friendly community, so you need more than signs and symbols and infrastructure. Advisory Committee, we've carried over, Citizens Advisory Committee, we've carried over from the bike plan, and we're probably looking at transitioning into more of a complete streets committee as well. That's very important, to advise staff on implementation of this plan. We've hired and made a permanent position for a multimodal planner. She's sitting in the audience tonight. Bike share. You've heard about the Red Bikes from Metro. That augments this plan. Bike-friendly community status. We are an honorable mention city right now. We're going for bronze this next year, as we get more routes under our belt, and that's a big thing, actually. It's a big thing from national recognition and put ourselves on the map more. Private fundraising's going on. TopekaBikeways.org, they're still taking sponsors to help with the match that they have pledged for our Phase Two. So help out there if you can. Policies and ordinances will come to you, have come to you for updates to, for instance, bike parking a few years ago that is now required in the city with new development. And then we'll also be talking with you very soon about downtown biking, motor vehicle ban on trails, as well as a harassment ordinance for bikes that will really help augment the biking culture here. And last but not least, as I said, Ally and her team have been working very hard to have this soft rollout, if you will, knowing we're in the winter, but we also know it's, things are, this is when things are being constructed. So we want to start educating and marketing what we have. We want people to use it. We want to know what the rules are, to that effect. So we'll have much more social media presence. We have our new BikePed Twitter handle account starting tonight. We also have flyers going out that you will be getting, TV spots, PSAs. And we have a great magician in the back, Sean Blake, who you've seen some of his work. I've got a one-minute video of what he's done for rules of the road. There's a three-minute version on our website, but we broke it down here for one minute tonight, and we'll take a look.
... must obey traffic signals in the same way as drivers. Both cars and bikes should always yield pedestrians. Cyclists are encouraged to ride on the roadway rather than on the shoulder or sidewalk. Shoulders are often littered and uneven. Obstacles like storm drains can cause a rider to fall or veer into traffic. On the sidewalk, a cyclist might be outside the peripheral vision of a driver, risking collision at an intersection. In some areas, a cyclist should take the lane. This means occupying the whole lane so they are visible to drivers. When possible, bicycle riders should keep to the right third of the lane to allow cars to pass on the left. Drivers should give bicycles at least three feet of space when they pass. For more information, go to Biketopeka.com or check out the bikeways information page at Topeka.org.
Okay, well, that was, yeah, it's a little preview of many more that we have out there. So I want to thank you for your time, and I'll stand for any questions and...
Would you, I think you should introduce your multimodal planner.
Yes, of course. Stand up, say. Taylor Ricketts, multimodal planner. We share her with Metro, so Susan Duffy and her get along real well.
Thank you.
Yes.
And I think it's important to note, because there has been comment, the majority of the funds by far was a KDOT grant. The city provided the match, but it was a KDOT grant that is doing the things that we are doing right now, correct?
That's correct, Your Honor. About 1.3 million in KDOT funds, a couple hundred thousand in city funds, and 50-some thousand in private funds. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments? Councilman Ortiz?
Thank you. I just have a comment. I have a couple people that ride in every day from Lawrence, and they're like, "Whoa, you guys are like Lawrence, you got a bike lane." Straight down Sixth Street, you know? And I was like, "Yes, we did, so the bikes can stay in their lane." So I just want you to know that it's very noticeable, and it's pretty neat. So, thank you for all your hard work.
Councilman Jensen?
Thank you, Your Honor. As an avid bikeman in this community, I think all this is wonderful. I'm curious, if we get bronze next year, does it just go silver and gold, or is there platinum and titanium and...
Councilmember Jensen, there actually is a platinum that we could go to.
So bronze would be four levels from best in the world.
Right.
Okay. We got goals. I like it. Thank you. I appreciate all this work. It's wonderful to see this community.
Any other? Councilman, or Deputy Mayor Hiller?
Well, I just want to take a timeout for a few thank yous. I've had the honor and pleasure of chairing bikeways as it has come along, and the staff has been just wonderful. I think that the partnership within the city, like the videos and the program that we just saw are fabulous. Within the funding that Bill pointed out, for instance, the Red Bikes program got picked up by TMTA, and so they're paying for that with grant money and other money that they've been able to raise. The 501 education program that Bill mentioned, it's on the almost back page, is 23,000 in grant money that the Community Cycle Project and Andy Fry went out and wrote grants for and raised. There'll be an announcement on Monday. The 55,000 that's toward Phase Two that the bikeways volunteers have been raising is just a piece. They have already invested over $20,000 in this system, and they're still raising money to pay for all the blue signs that you see for Phases One and Two, because federal money doesn't pay for those. And watch for an announcement about a pretty cool grant that they nailed. Mondays seem to be our grant days lately, so watch for that. And thanks again, because the staff's been great. Thank you.
No other further questions? Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation. The within proceed with the roll call.
Mayor Walgas?
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Here.
Clear?
Here.
Ortiz?
Here.
Shum?
Here.
De La Isla?
Here.
Jensen?
Present.
Schwartz?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
And Harmon.
And we want to welcome back Councilmembers Ortiz and Harmon, who've been out for a short time. Glad to have you back with us. Councilmembers, there are no additions or deletions to the agenda, and there will be one executive session. Proceed then with the consent agenda, if the clerk would read.
A is a board appointment recommending the appointment of Brandon Barnett to the Citizens' Advisory Council for a term ending on June 30, 2017. B is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of James Parish to the Downtown Business Improvement District Advisory Board for a term ending January 1, 2018. C are minutes of the regular meeting of November 17, 2015, and there are no applications.
Okay, that is the consent agenda. Councilman Harmon?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Okay, it's been moved to approve, and Councilwoman Clear, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
We have 10, oh, sorry, nine yes.
Nine having voted yes. The consent agenda is approved as read. I want to take the opportunity to introduce Brandon Barnett. If you would stand, please, to appoint him to the Citizens Advisory Council. Glad to have you here, and also Jim Parish, being reappointed to the Downtown Improvement District. Thank you both for your service. We will proceed then with the action items. 5A on alcohol grant recommendations.
A is approval of funding recommendations by Alcohol and Drug Abuse Advisory Council in the amount of $600,000 for the 2016 Special Alcohol Fund.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an item that comes before this body annually. This is very similar to both the amount and structure for last year. Before saying more, I'd really like to ask Mr. Max Wilson. He is currently the Chair of the Advisory Council Grant Review Committee. He's been a member of the Advisory Council for the past 24 years, and he also previously served as the Executive Director of PARZ, I believe, about four years ago. So, welcome and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I could think after 24 years on the Alcohol and Drug Council, I'd be recovered by now. But I keep coming back. Thank you for that introduction. And thank you for the opportunity to be here to present these fine programs. I'd like to give you a little background about what the council is, Pecos Shawnee County Alcohol and Drug Abuse Advisory Council.
I'm going to ask you to step a bit to the right, a little closer to the mic.
Sure.
That's good, thank you.
Okay, these councils are spread throughout Kansas. They provide a forum for service providers and others concerned about alcohol and drug abuse. They provide advice and recommendations concerning the allocation of public funds. They identify unmet community needs regarding alcohol and other drug abuse, support and promote programs and strategies to effectively address community needs, and support and provide community education on alcohol and other drugs. The mission of our council is to reduce the incidence and social cost of alcohol and drug abuse in Topeka and Shawnee County. The membership of the council includes representatives from provider organizations, public and private organizations, and individuals serving as community representatives. The Grant Review Committee members this year include Dinah Pennington, excuse me, she's a retired director of Shawnee County Community Corrections, Suzanne James, former victims' rights advocate for the District Attorney's Office, Rochelle Vega-Ratana from the City of Topeka, Fiona Martin, clinical social worker and alcohol and drug counselor in private practice, and myself, Max Wilson. I had a handout that should be distributed around by now. Would like to share with you the statute, and as I understand it, we have somebody in the room today, tonight, that was partially responsible for the statute allocating funds for alcohol and drug abuse, as well as city and county general funds and parks and rec from liquor by the drink tax, and I think the Honorable Former Representative Vic Miller. Let's give him a hand.
Hey.
I've been wanting to do this for years, but I was afraid to until now, but since
he's retiring soon, thought it might be safe. The monies in the Special Alcohol and Drug Program Fund shall be expended only for the purchase, establishment, maintenance, or expansion of services or programs whose principal purpose is alcoholism, drug abuse prevention and education, alcohol and drug detoxification, intervention in alcohol and drug abuse, or treatment of persons who are alcoholics or drug abusers, or are in danger of becoming alcoholics or drug abusers. That is the statute. Now, I understand that the funding formula is that, once the state takes their cut, the rest of the money is distributed to counties and cities to be divided in three-thirds, one-third for general fund, one-third for parks and rec, and one-third for alcohol and drug abuse. The funding available this year was 600,000, the same as last year level funding. Interestingly enough, the county funding was down 19,500. So I guess all the drinkers are moving into the city from the county. Actually, there aren't that many liquor by the drink establishments in the county, but it's quite a reduction. Anybody have any other ideas about that? I'd like to hear them. Okay, the first program is Prevention Recovery Services Community Prevention Program. The council is recommending 180,450. And the second program is Prevention Recovery Services Evaluation and Intervention, more familiarly known as Youth Evaluation Program, and the council is recommending 56,133. The other, the next program is the Third Judicial District Drug Court. The council recommendation is 28,600, up from 25,000 last year. Next program is Topeka Projects Job for Young Adults. Recommendation this year is 38,000, I'm sorry, for 2016, 38,800, down from 40,000. The next program is Kansas Children's Service, like Drug and Danger Children Program, and we're recommending 13,580, slight reduction from the 14,000 last year. And the next program is Vallejo Recovery Center, and at this point, I'd like to introduce the new CEO of Vallejo, Bill Persinger. Stand, give us a hand. He's brand-new to Topeka, and I'm so tickled that he's here. I knew him when he was at Hiawatha, and now at Emporia, and he's buying a home here and going to be with us, and after a long search, they hired a fine one. We're recommending 282,437 for Vallejo's Social Detoxification Program. And you'll notice the asterisk, the increase, this increase is due to transferring historical funding of 50,000 from Vallejo's Reintegration Program to its Social Detox Program. There's some doubt about the reintegration program's viability in 2016 due to reductions in basic funding and particularly state funding. You have any questions?
Are there questions for Mr. Wilson on any of these areas? Councilmember Rick Jensen?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. City Manager, are these budgeted in our 2016 budget already?
Yes, this, yes.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
I think this is a fund that's really, it's in the budget, but yet it's continuing...
Just to complete that thought, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, these funds have to be expended in this manner anyway, so it's really not an optional thing.
Yeah. Councilman Ortiz?
Max, thank you for serving on a million boards there. I know some other ones that you serve on, too. Hey, Drug Court, is that all we need for Drug Court? I thought maybe they would...
They have other funding. Could I call Jared up here to talk about that?
Well, I'm just, that's kind of a low number to me.
Well, it is a low number up there. We get county money. The county funding for that program is not very much, 10,725. Jared, could you speak to that?
We have, this isn't our sole source of our funding. We receive some county general fund dollars in the amount of 15,000. We also have historically received some forfeiture funds from the Sheriff's Department to apply towards treatment. Both Sheriff Barta and our current Sheriff, Jones, have been tremendously supportive in that way. So I think that's a great cause to use those funds for as well. But, and as well as the tobacco paraphernalia ordinance that is here in Topeka, we take the funding from the licensing fees for that and use that towards the, towards treatment. So we have several different funding sources. We have really kind of a five-legged table that, or chair that we have that we, so this isn't our sole source of our funding, but we do have, we do a lot with very little. We try to have a maximum benefit for our program.
Okay, thank you for explaining that. I just know in the past, the numbers have been higher, and I'm like, well, maybe everybody's not going to court anymore, I didn't, you know, so I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Now, could you state your name again and your title?
I'm sorry, Jared Harson, Third Judicial District Drug Court Coordinator.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Are there other questions? Mr. Wilson? Seeing none? Yeah, go ahead.
We may be coming back. Jared reminded me of something. There may be a vaping ordinance that we might bring forth to the council some one of these days about the new things vaping and kids are using it with marijuana oils and all kinds of stuff, and doing it during school, and so that's another issue. That could be part of the paraphernalia piece that could help fund Drug Court.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Councilmembers, your pleasure. Mr. Shum? Moves to approve. Councilman Jensen, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the Special Alcohol Drug Grant recommendations are approved. Thank you. Next is item 5B on the American Medical Response Agreement.
B is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Jim Colson, providing for the renewal of a non-inclusive franchise to American Medical Response to operate an ambulance service within the City of Topeka, which replaces the franchise ordinance codified at City Code Appendix B, Article 6, that will expire December 30...
Appendix B, Article 6, that will expire December 31, 2015.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to have Ms. Robertson, City Attorney, just explain what this is. This is a, an agreement that comes before us annually.
Yes, this is simply an extension of an existing non-exclusive franchise agreement to provide ambulance services. The County Commission already provided the authorization for them to continue provising that, under the provisions, that we would grant an extension through December 31 of 2016, which is what this would do.
Are there any questions? Councilwoman Ortiz.
Motion to approve.
See a motion to approve the ordinance. Councilman Jensen, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes. The ordinance is approved. And I believe we have several members of the American Medical Response Team here. If you would stand, just to be acknowledged, thank you for being here and being apparten and showing your support. Go to Item 5C on Downtown Business District.
C is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Jim Colson, amending City of Topeka Code Section 340030, establishing a service fee levy for 2016 relating to the Capital City Downtown Business Improvement District, and specifically repealing said original section.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With your permission, I'd invite Mr. Kaufman to provide an overview of this ordinance and answer any questions this body may have.
Mr. Kaufman.
Mayor and Members of the Council, so I have before you tonight fees and levy for the Capital City Downtown Business Improvement District. So, a business improvement district is something that's allowed by state statute. It's actually been in place since Topeka since 1986. And basically, what you do with the district is you draw a district map or boundaries, and then you levy a fee on top of that to pay for certain improvements and services in a downtown area. So, ours has been in place since 1986, and I think, believe in 2000, there were new boundaries that were established. Generally speaking, and the boundaries kind of jot around a little, so I have a map here if anybody would like to see a map. But generally, they run from about Second to 12th and from Topeka Boulevard over to Adams Street. It does kind of go down some alleys, and there's some corners of that that are cut out, but that's the general boundaries of the district. We collect about $186,000 annually with that fee. And how that works is we have a contract with Downtown Topeka is where those fees go to, to do those various improvements in downtown. So Downtown Topeka annually surveys all the businesses in the area and looks at their square footage and everything. Once they get that information, they hand it over to the city, and then the City Finance Department bills the residents of those businesses for those buildings. So, that's generally the concept of the district, and I can stand for any questions. Vince Frye with DTI is also here tonight.
And I know the residential properties, of course, aren't included. This is only commercial. And I think in the, in the ordinance, it describes what is included and what isn't. Are there questions? Councilwoman Claire.
What is the money spent for? What do we spend the $186,000 on?
So, we have a contractual relationship with Downtown Topeka, Inc., and Vince Frye is here, and he could come up if he requested.
Yeah, why don't we? That would be a good suggestion. Mr. Frye, there, to come up and give an overview of how the money is used. I think it's pretty much, well, I'm sure it's in the ordinance, in general possibilities, but then it's the, this board specifically would determine the budget for it.
The money is used to oversee the district. We have a person that is out throughout the district every single day, six days a week, and seven days if there's a big event on Saturdays. We empty all the trash, we sweep, we clean, we promote, we take inventory of all the available properties, we connect people that have an interest in purchasing. We basically do everything that the city would normally do if they had to oversee this area. So, that's basically our responsibilities. Put on parades, we help with anybody that wants to do events downtown. The money for barricades and porta-potties come out of this also. So, it's, it's something that is certainly used efficiently.
Thank you. Other questions? Councilman Cohen?
This might be just for us, is how is this tax collected? Is it through property taxes or a special sales tax or something like that for that district?
Deputy City Manager.
It is assessed by the city. It's based on square footage. It's .0605 cents per square foot. It is only on commercial properties, no residential, no nonprofits. And it is overseen by an advisory board of nine that the mayor appoints and you approve. And that advisory board then makes recommendations to the council, and that's how we operate.
I think we bill, the money comes to the city, and then the city makes a payment to DTI.
We have an administrative fee monthly, and then if we incur expenses for things like barricades and all, then we pay for it, and then we are reimbursed by the city.
And there is, and I think by statute, there is a board, this board that Jim Parish was appointed to tonight, they have to have businesses downtown. That's the one criteria...
Businesses or property owners.
Property owners downtown to be on that board.
That is correct.
Okay. An interesting aspect, I went to at the National League City of Cities Conference, I went to a, one of the sessions on downtown, on what they were doing. And in San Antonio, in the similar item, right now, if a building is vacant or unused, it isn't taxed, correct?
That is correct.
They change so that there is a fee to encourage people to develop. And they were putting more teeth into this type of a provision to help develop occur rather than people just holding properties vacant over a period of time.
And that has been a subject of a lot of discussions over the years by the advisory board. And certainly, we have to maintain the property in front of those empty buildings. So, something that the board, I'm sure, will discuss in the future.
Yeah, we clean their sidewalks for them.
That's right.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
It's your pleasure. Councilman Hiller?
Move to approve.
Move to approve. Councilwoman De La Isla, seconds. Discussion? All those in favor? I'm sorry, Councilman Jensen.
As a property owner of the district, I have been advised to abstain.
Thank you. All right. All those in favor of the ordinance, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
We have eight yes, one abstention, meaning Mr. Jensen.
Eight having voted yes, the ordinance is approved. Go to Item D, ordinance on expenditures.
D is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Jim Colson, allowing and approving city expenditures for the period of October 3 through October 30, 2015, and enumerating said expenditures therein.
Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Approval would authorize city expenditures of the amount of $15,623,145.16.
Questions? Discussion? Your pleasure. Councilwoman Ortiz, move to approval. Councilwoman De La Isla, seconds. Discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes. The ordinance is approved as read. That completes our action items for tonight. We'll proceed to announcements. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Really, from a personnel perspective, I just wanted to recognize, even though neither of them are here tonight, I wanted to recognize that Megan Bottenberg's last day with the city is on Friday. She has been a phenomenal help in terms of communications and developing some really effective assistance programs. Secondly, Doug Whitaker's last day is Friday. They're both moving on to excellent positions, and I'm excited for them, but sad for us as an organization. And by the end of this week, you'll also get some information on some changes that are happening within the city, and we want to make sure that everybody is aware of who's sitting in what chair and what the phone numbers are. And we'll have that out by the end of this week. Old dogs and new tricks.
Thank you. Councilman Cohen. Councilman Harmon. Deputy Mayor Hiller.
I'm gonna run through a quick string, but there is a lot that has happened, great stuff in the last few weeks and coming up as well. Downtown, Mobergh's Spices opened with a ribbon cutting, the hotel the week before that, Shannon's Bakery had a ribbon cutting yesterday. The Ichabod was dedicated today and is now on Kansas Avenue as well. I went, or Ichabod Washburn, I should say. I attended the Chocolate Nutcracker at Teacack over the weekend. It was phenomenal. A different version of the traditional nutcracker, different music, different talent. Gotta give credit to Steve Massey and the It Takes a Village program. I am very hopeful that that will become an annual, and we will have three nutcrackers. The other two are coming up the next couple of weekends, and so get the kids and the family and the friends and go, but the Chocolate Nutcracker was phenomenal. The parade has been rescheduled. The downtown parade, due to safety, was postponed last weekend with the ice, but it's rescheduled for Sunday evening, the 13th, at 6:00. So, the entire Miracle on Kansas Avenue event. Certainly encourage everybody to get downtown and otherwise to check Topeka 360 because there is so much going on. The Festival of Trees, Winter Wonderland, plenty to do in Topeka and an exciting time to be here. Thank you.
Councilwoman Claire.
The only thing I have this week is taking a pie in the face because either the kids really like me at school or they really don't like me at school because I raise the most money. So, go Indians.
Okay, good for you. Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna ask the police chief to come forward, if he would, please, to the podium. And while he's doing that, I'll go through my announcements. This is awesome. If you haven't checked it out, I know I've been sick and I haven't seen it. I think I was right in here somewhere and they covered me up, but this is awesome to see this. And the Capitol in the background, we all have a copy of it, but anyway, I just, I just wanted to say that. Today is December 1st, and it's Rosa Parks' 60th anniversary. The buses were free all day, so we're grateful to Rosa Parks for not giving up her seat. So, it was awesome to see people on the buses, and we thank Topeka Metro for that. Last but not least, well, it's not last, but I called you up, Chief, because, you know, kind of relax here, you know? I always get scolded how the firefighters are my boys and how I just, in October, I just do this big hurrah for them. So, in December, I'm gonna do a big hurrah for you guys. We're gonna talk about the Lock It, Lose It, or Remove It campaign, and I'm sure you can give us some tips because it's Christmas time, and you can do that, so I can say I played it even field, okay? So, what do you have to tell us, Chief?
Councilmember, so this is the holiday of cheer and good tidings, but it's also the time of year for auto thefts. We do see a spike in auto thefts during this time of year. So, a lot of times when we go out to take the reports, so many times, the car's running and the keys are in the ignition, and it allows the bad guys to just kind of get into your vehicle and take it out for a joyride. So, we're asking that everybody lock their cars up and don't leave your vehicles running with the keys in ignition.
Now, I've had the question, is it okay to leave it running with the automatic start in your driveway?
Yes, that's, that's a safe, secure method and having your car run so it can heat up and get going through the...
Okay, just, that's come about a time and time again, and I thought it was. But anyway, so I'll call you up next week, and you'll give us another tip on Lock It, Lose It, or Remove It, so we can help the guys in Blueout. And last but not least, I just want to say to Richard, our thoughts and prayers are with you and will continue to be with you. I think I've been on this council long enough, you know, when one council member hurts, we all should hurt. And, you know, we're with you, and we want you to know that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Shum. Councilwoman De La Isla. Councilman Jensen.
So, on Monday night, we were at the top of the tower doing the final run-through for TEDx Topeka, and as it got later in the evening, I wandered over to the window and looked down Kansas Avenue with all of our new Christmas decorations, and it really looks fantastic. We have a sharp look in downtown at this point, and if you haven't been there at night to see the new lights, go check it out. This community is something we can all be proud of, and I think people really need to see that. Thank you.
Thank you. That completes the announcements. We do have an executive session. If you give the parameters for that, Deputy Mayor Hiller.
That would be governing body, 60 minutes. The subject would be non-elected officials.
All right. And that is a motion?
A move that we adjourn to that executive session.
Councilwoman Claire, seconds. Discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have eight yes.
Eight having voted yes. It is approved. We will go into executive session when the room is clear.